Okay, calling this meeting to order. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings NJ SA 10 4-6, adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the Courier News and posting notice in the Board of Education Administration Building and district schools and filing notice with the borough clerk. I hereby call to order the regular public meeting Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, in the Lincoln Middle School Cafeteria, 400, sorry, 400 Dunellen Avenue at seven, what is it, 7:03, 7:03 PM. This meeting is broadcast live. For details, check www.dunellenschools.org. Moving on to agenda item number two. Moving on to roll call. Mr. Pepe, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Condit? Not present. Ms. Iback?
Present.
Dr. Gendrono?
Present.
Mrs. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Sotinoi? Not present. Ms. Shimpf?
Present.
Mrs. Shep?
Present.
Mr. Walker is not present. We do have a quorum.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Moving on to item number three, Pledge of Allegiance in Moment of Silence. The flag is over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you all please remain standing for a moment of reflection and respect for our troops serving throughout the world, our troops who have served, and our troops who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of our United States of America. Moving on to item number three, sorry, item number four, Executive Session. The Dunellen, the Dunellen Board, excuse me, of Education will now adjourn into executive session to discuss items that fall within specific exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, see NJ SA 10 4-12B. The confidential matters discussed by the Board during the executive session include items related to individual privacy, collective bargaining agreements, as well as personnel. Any discussion that does not need to remain confidential will be made public as soon as it is practical. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All individuals who may be discussed in executive session have been adequately notified. Action will take place after the conclusion of the executive session. May I have a motion to move to executive session, please?
Move to go to exec.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, see you in about the 25 minutes.
Moving on to item, agenda item number five. Student recognition, oh wait, sorry. May I have a motion please to come back to public?
Love to go back to public.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we can move on to item number five. So that would be the student recognition, I'll turn this over to Mr. Ross.
Great, thank you Dr. Gendrano. Greetings everyone, it's wonderful to see a full house and such excitement for our student recognition for tonight. So each month, we recognize students at each of the schools who have demonstrated incredible character or academic success or community support and service. So we're gonna go school by school and we will start with Dan Allen High School and I'm proud to introduce DHS Principal, Mr. Lynch. While Mr. Lynch is coming up, we're gonna bring the step and repeat up. So parents, after all of the students from the particular school are notified, they're gonna come up and they're gonna stand in front of the step and repeat. We'll give you a minute, you can come out of your seats, take pictures, take your time. And then at the end of all of their recognitions, you'll be able to take pictures again for a couple minutes on either side. Alright, so without further ado, Mr. Lynch.
Alright, good evening ladies and gentlemen, we're very excited to do our Students of the Month this year for the month of November. I'm gonna do a little bit out of order and you'll see why at the end. The first student of the month I would like to call up is 10th grader Joe Reyes Alvarado. Joe's a heavily involved student here at the high school, he played football this past fall, he plays basketball during the winter. And his best sport, he excels, he was a starter last year on the baseball team. He's an exceptional young man, great student, teachers have great things to say about him and we're very honored to have him as our 10th grade Student of the Month, Joe Reyes Alvarado. Our 11th grade Student of the Month is Julio Mendoza. Julio, another exceptional young man, has worked very hard since he got to the high school. Has done such a great job working with other students, especially a lot of our Spanish speaking students, helping translate, helping them work in their classes. He really is a role model, exceptional artist as well, and a really all around great guy. So Julio Mendoza, our 11th grade Student of the Month. And our 9th and 12th grade Students of the Month, I'm gonna call them up together and I'll explain why. Our 9th grade Student of the Month, Michelle Evangelista, and our 12th grade Student of the Month, Carrington Horn. Individually, they're both fantastic individuals. Michelle came over to the high school this year and really puts a, has a smile on her face every single day. She is in such a good mood, even when I'm yelling at the students to get to school on time and she tells me not to yell and my thing is, I want people to get there on time and she gets a little mad at me for doing it, but in a kind way. And she really is a sweetheart, she does such a great job in her classes and has made a lot of friends and we're so proud of her. Our 12th grade Student of the Month, Carrington Horn, is another exceptional student in honors and AP classes. She was a cheerleader this past year, was a captain, she's vice president of her 12th grade class and has really done an exceptional job here at the high school. Last year, she was in our leadership class and one of the things we did with our leadership class was during the phys ed classes with the middle school, our leadership class went to Morecraft Park with the students. And the reason I brought them up together is Carrington and Michelle became really good friends last year and they referred to each other as their, she referred to Carrington as her high school buddy. And with the program that we have, they, all the students really looked forward to being able to work with their high school buddies. And now that she's at the high school, it's nice to be able to see them together and in school together. So it really was a great program we were able to do and it's nice to see the impact that they were able to have upon one another and the other students in the school. So I really wanna congratulate all of our Students of the Month for high school.
Next from Lincoln Middle School, I'd like to invite Assistant Principal, Mrs. Caulfield.
Okay, hi everyone, good evening, I'm Mrs. Caulfield, Assistant Principal at Lincoln. I'm gonna start with our 6th grade Student of the Month, that is Ginny Gergis if you'll come on up. The 6th grade team of teachers is honored to recognize Ginny as the Student of the Month, she's a dedicated learner and a kind classmate. She's always willing to participate and share her ideas in class discussions and she's not afraid to explore new topics and dig deeper into those topics. She contributes thoughtful questions and insights, she's attentive and inquisitive and works hard on everything she does. Her curiosity inspires others to stay engaged and try their hardest too. Not only is Ginny a leader in the classroom, but she's also a leader outside the classroom as she is part of our LMS Student Voice Group, which we just had a meeting today where she gave us some really, really good ideas moving forward. So we're really excited to have Ginny here at LMS. And if you would please join me in congratulating Ginny, I'm proud of you. Next up, we have our 7th grade Student of the Month, RJ Siori. RJ is known at LMS for being a very friendly and supportive classmate. He helps to create a welcoming and warm environment and brighten the day of others. He's a very conscientious student and puts in genuine effort in each and every one of his classes. He's a very strong critical thinker and asks meaningful questions and again is not afraid to dig deeper into topics in all of his subjects and all of his classes. In group work, RJ shines as a real leader and collaborates seamlessly with others and shows patience and respect and is really able to help those around him. We thank him for being such a strong example to all of his classmates and we're very proud of all your hard work and leadership at LMS, congrats RJ. And finally, we have our 8th grade Student of the Month, Carter Inyang. Carter brings positivity, curiosity and leadership into every classroom he enters. He's an outstanding and truly, a student who truly brightens all of our days. He's polite and always welcomes everyone with a smile and he really sets a power example of what it means to be a good friend and a good citizen. He's a great 8th grade student to have as a role model for all of our younger students. In the classroom, he's an active learner and is fully engaged in all class discussions. He works extremely well with all his peers because he listens and encourages others and helps create a supportive learning environment. Outside of academics, Carter shares another wonderful strength, which is his great trumpet playing. His musical talent brings energy and spirit to our school and we thank for all his enthusiasm, kindness and leadership, congratulations Carter.
Alright, and last I'd like to bring up Mr. Tennant from Faber Elementary School.
Good evening everyone, thanks for coming out tonight. For Faber and pre-K, we have Noah Adaptante, where's Noah? There he is! Come to the front Noah. Noah's chosen to be Student of the Month because he's so helpful in class. Always wants to share his toys with the younger students and helps them show how to play with them as well. He is a very sweet kid and eager to learn and participate in class, congratulations Noah, clap it up for Noah. Kindergarten, we have Dara Franco Batero, come on up. Dara's a student who was chosen for Student of the Month because she's reliable and trustworthy. She always gives her best efforts and is such a kind friend, her positive spirits lights up the room and encourages her peers just to work hard, great job Dara, clap it up. First grade, Sofia Ventura Flores, she was in the back there, there she is. Sofia was chosen for Student of the Month because of her hard, she's a hardworking student that always has a positive attitude in school. She is very kind and respectful to her teachers and friends and is a great example for her classmates. She tries her best in everything she does and she loves to be in school, so do I, good job, well done. Second grade, we have two, first up is Joseph Lopez Parada, where is he? Joseph, bring it in every day. Joseph is kind, helpful student, he's always participating in discussions in class, he has improved tremendously through the past year and has been an amazing student for Ms. Posse. She's very proud of him and has just done an amazing job in growing and learning, great job Joseph, clap it up for Joseph. We also have Katya Troyana, where's Katya? Katya's an incredible example of dedication and perseverance. She consistently gives an effort in everything she does and approaches every challenge with a positive attitude. No matter how difficult the task, she never complains and never gives up, her hard work and determination truly sets her apart and is a role model for others, good job Katya, well done. Third grade, Yoslin Guerrero Del Cid. She's always lending a helping hand to everyone, she is quick to follow directions and try her best in every challenge. She is kind and a considerate friend and does an amazing job in Ms. Jacobson's class, great job. Fourth grade, Amelia Valzero Torres, Amelia! Amaya is polite, respectful and kind to everyone, she is organized and responsible, she always participates and goes above and beyond in the classroom to help others, awesome work, great job. Fifth grade, Kayden Thorpe, where is he? Clap it up! Mr. Burry writes, I am very proud and enthusiastically recognized Kayden Thorpe as a Class Student of the Month. It is always an easy choice for Kayden as he's been, exemplary of his expectations in the classroom, his attitude, his effort, everything is top notch. On the first day of school, Kayden has been a role model in respect and in word. He listens and follows directions when asked without hesitation. He accepts and adopts constructive criticism when necessary and handles consequence rewards with grace and humility, great job Kayden, clap it up for Kayden. Well earned, well earned. Special areas, Isabella Garcia Rojas, Isabella! This month's special area Student of the Month is someone who truly stands for her positive attitude and steady presence. They are always willing to lend a helping hand in classmates and teachers showing kindness and cooperation in everything they do. Even when challenge arises, this student remains calm and focused and truly is an example of being Dan Allen's strong. In addition to her character, she is exemplary across all aspects of art, music media, PE, technology and approach to every special area class. Well done, well done Isabella, well done. You can clap it up up here for Faber Student of the Month!
All right, so, oh, no, it's all good. All right, so, parents, first of all, let's get a big round of applause for all of the students of the month. All right, and we're gonna take, we're gonna take about a five-minute break or so right now. This is double-sided. There's, there's a logo on the other side. So feel free to take individual pictures or whatever you'd like. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for being here. Congratulations, students, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
And thank you to the parents and the community for supporting our kids and schools. Kudos, kudos, kudos. We also, there was a, well, changing gears, in October, Mr. Ross, in addition to myself, Ms. Shim, Mr. Sa'Noa, Ms. Kandit, and Mr. Pepe, were the contingent representing Da'Nellin School District at the New Jersey School Boards Association Workshop Convention in Atlantic City. We participated in a number of sessions and met with a number of groups closely tied to our school board work. It was a tremendous learning experience, and we will look, we will look to apply our learnings from all of those sessions to ongoing and future discussions. As always, healthy kids means healthy schools, which means a healthy community. Bottom line, we encourage you to take the common sense-proven precautions, like washing hands well, covering up when sneezing, keeping sick kids home, keeping current of vaccinations, to minimize the spread of bacteria and viruses that can really impact our school year. As I do on, at all these board meetings, I've mentioned monthly celebrations. November is Heritage Month for Native American and Alaska Native Heritage Month. December, Universal Human Rights Month. December 2nd is International Day for the Abolition of Slaves. December 3rd is International Day of Persons with Disabilities. December 18th, International Migration Day. And 20th of December will be International Human Solidarity Day. I mention these recognitions to underscore how important diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging are to our lives and the world around us. With diversity, we are able to welcome and appreciate different views and perspectives and how that makes our lives richer and stronger. Equity is important, so we are all playing on the same field by the same rules. Inclusion is key, so there is equal access to opportunities and resources for everyone. And with belonging, you feel you are part of something, a group, a community where you are accepted, valued, and comfortable. You fit in and are an important part of the whole. These things have an unbelievable impact on our community, especially our kids. Open, honest, and genuine communication that is respectful, positive, supportive, fair, and most of all, kind, goes a long way in strengthening a community. Thank you, everyone, for your time and listening. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Dr. Gendrano. I'm going to begin the superintendent's report with, by passing it over to Queen Emile, who will provide the student representatives' report.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give a quick update on our fall and winter sports and how our teams have been doing so far. Starting with girls soccer, the team had a really strong season. One of the many highlights was beating Timothy Christian for the first time in a few years, which was a huge deal for them. Even though they didn't win their last game, the season overall was definitely a success, and the girls should be really proud. For boys soccer, they had an amazing run this year. The team made it to state and even pushed all the way to the semifinals, which is one of the best seasons they've had in a long time. They put in a lot of work and it really showed. Next up is winter cheer. Tryouts are happening over the next few days, and the team is looking to build the perfect cheer squad for basketball season. This is actually really exciting for Da'Nellin because we haven't had a winter basketball cheer team before. So everyone's looking forward to seeing that. Our upcoming winter sports include basketball, wrestling, and cheer. Right now, basketball players are participating in open gyms and official tryouts start next Monday. The energy around the team is already high, and we're expecting a good season. Lastly, wrestling hasn't officially started yet, but the team has been training hard in the weight room and preparing for the season. Their practices begin next week, and they've already showed a lot of discipline and commitment. Overall, we're heading into winter sports with a lot of excitement, hard work, and confidence. It's looking like a great season ahead for Da'Nellin. Thank you.
Thank you, Queen. All right, moving on, we're going to go to the SSDS report for Period 2 of last school year. So I'll bring up Mr. Altmeier, our Director of Accountability.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I am here to report on the Student Safety Data System. That is the collection of violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying, as well as HIV trainings and programs. Keep in mind, once again, this is the report period number 2, which means it's from last year, last school year, January 1st through June 30th of 2025. On this next slide, it shows, it breaks down... This is also on the website as well, the information. So, under incidents, violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, and HIV confirmed, again, for Period 2, for the high school, there were 18. For Lincoln Middle School, there was 1. Faber Elementary School, there was 2. Other incidents leading to removal, DHS, 2. LMS, 5. And Faber, 0. HIV trainings, for DHS, there were 7. For LMS, there were 7. And for Faber, there was 3. And finally, HIV programs, DHS, 16. LMS, 16. And HIV, for Faber, there was 23. District-wide, there was HIV trainings of 4 for Period 2, and HIV programs, 0. This slide here, you see a list of items. I'm not going to read all of them, only because pretty much all of them were ongoing, and they were done during the report period for Number 1, which was the beginning of the school year. The one thing I will point out is the last one, New Jersey Student Support Services, NJ4S. Continued slide, again, once again, Middlesex County Student Support Services, NJ4S, grades 6 through 12. And I'll get a little deeper into that as we go. This is the school district incidents, and as you see, this is data collected for the last 11 years, dating back to 2014 all the way up to 2024-25. It breaks it down. Violence, for example, in 24-25, there were 7 incidents. Vandalism, there was 2. Weapons, 1. Substance abuse, 17. And HIV, there were 3. School district incidents, now this time, they grouped them together. Violence, vandalism, substance, and weapons. For 24-25, there were 27, and again, this is throughout the district. Other incidents leading to removal, there were 7. And HIV, there were 3. This next slide has to do with HIV investigations. Once again, this is Period 2 only. Investigations at Faber, there were 1. And there was 1 HIV confirmed. At Lincoln Middle School, there was 9 investigations, and there was 2 HIV confirmed. And at DHS, there was 8 investigations and 0 were confirmed. For a total of 3 HIBs in the district. This slide has to deal with district-wide trainings and programs. Once again, I'm gonna slide all the way to the bottom because all the other ones were ongoing throughout the rest of the school year from the beginning. But Middlesex County Student Support Services, NJ4S, played a major role in the second part of the year. Now, we're going to get into the individual schools. Now, we're going to get into the individual schools, starting with Faber. This first slide, again, ongoing, things that were reported in the fall of the last year. On this slide, these were things focused on during the second part of the school year. Wellness clinician counseling, principles of hip hop, peace, love, unity, and having fun together, Random Act of Kindness Week, Lunch Bunch Groups, Safety Ambassador Presentations, NJ Civil Courts Visit Assembly, Civil Rights Movement Assembly, Color Run, Celebration of Leadership, Healthiness, and Individuality. This is Lincoln Middle School. For trainings, Legal One, Anti-Bullying Specialist, Middlesex County NJ4S. This is the program I was talking about in the trainings earlier. So what we did was, we had NJ4S come in and present to the students three different assemblies in January and February of last year. And then they also did three evening webinars for the parents in the community as well. The first one was dealing with cyberbullying. The second was dealing with social media safety. And the third, interpersonal community relationships, and Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Acts. Under programs, Battle of the Classes, Valentine's Day Fundraiser, Spirit Week, Empowerment Group, David Flood Assembly. And like I mentioned, the presentations and the assemblies for the kids, cyberbullying, social media safety, interpersonal and community relationships. Urban Assembly, SEL Project Being Kind, Not Buying a Program, Bullying Prevention, Seventh Grade Students, School Spirit and Unity Week, Transition Project, Incoming Sixth Grade and Parents. Moving on to DHS. For trainings, School Safety Speaker, Climate and Culture Improvement, Say Something Implementation, once again, the Middlesex County NJ4S, for Cyberbullying, Social Media Safety, Interpersonal Community Relationships, and Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Acts. For programs, Peer Pressures, Presentation by Wellspring, Young Men's Conference, and Women's Empowerment Conference. And wrapping up for DHS, once again, they also had the Cyberbullying, Social Media Safety, Interpersonal and Community Relationships, assemblies for the students, and then School Spirit, Celebrate Unity. And then they also had a Staff First Students Volleyball Session. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, thank you for the report, and it was very informative. And I just do have a couple of questions. With your reports on the HIV reporting and the numbers that we have, do we have any association with outcomes and efficacy on, on how they would improve on the, on the different instances of HIV? Is there any kind of way to analyze that, make an association with the program, and any kind of, you know, benefit?
To be honest with you, being that this is my first year with this program, I couldn't provide any data for you with regards to that. But all I do know is the programs, I was there presently for the programs and the assemblies, and they really did a nice job, and it's truly beneficial for these kids to hear the type of things that these presenters are coming and speaking about in the assemblies. And they reach all grades from sixth through twelfth, both middle school and high school.
Okay, thank you. The second question I have is, with the growth of AI and, and people, not only kids, but also adults, interacting with it as another way to socialize in an environment, but sometimes it has a negative impact on that, is there a way to, to see if there's any interaction or any control with AI and the kids and what they're doing in their mental health?
So that is something that we can look into. We already have been in contact with NJ4S. We are going to have them back again this year. And I know cyberbullying is part of the presentation that we've already talked about, of them bringing to the table, so that is something we'll explore.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I did also have a question or two. Could we go back to the slides where we're looking at the number of incidents? I don't remember which slide it was.
Just let me know which one.
Keep going. It was the one that had like, I noticed that it was over, yeah, that's the one.
This one?
Yes. So, looking at this, looking at this, like, there seems to be an upward tick for 24-25. I'm looking at those numbers, the last time we saw something like that was back in 2017-18, and there was, I guess, a bit of a decrease, and now seems a bit of an increase. Just wondering, is there something happening? Like, that seventeen substance abuse stands out to me, you know, across all the different years. What's changing, or any thoughts on what's changing?
To be honest with you, I don't have a whole lot of information on that, only because of, again, stepping into this position for the first time, but also, just based on my experience in the middle school, I really didn't have to do this or deal with this as a middle school principal. It's more geared toward, unfortunately, the high school, that I can say.
I see, okay. It just seems like those stand out or outliers, but are they, is it an outlier, or is it a trend? Thank you, thank you for answering the question.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
That's for real, yeah. Yeah, it's really doing that. All right, thank you, Mr. Altmeier, really appreciate that. I'll just speak to a couple of things as well, just with regard to the questions. I think that part of the uptick that, that we see, and we'll, we'll see if this year kind of bears this out, but with the increase in the number of HIBs that were reported, I think that's a reporting side change, just in terms of the vigilance of the team, with two counselors now who are addressing this at the middle school. There's, there are more incidents being reported for the, the purpose of identifying concerning issues potentially, and then trying to identify ways to sort of curb those behaviors. Substance abuse last year, I think, was definitely an issue. We had, you know, some board hearings where we had to, you know, speak with students and their families. But again, I actually do think that that might also be a reporting side issue. Again, we'll see what happens this year. But there is a, there's a, with the rise of vaping, right, there is, there seems to be an increased tendency of kids to believe that they can get away with things. And so there's a, an element of, you know, that type of behavior where kids are in the bathroom, or whatever it might be. Teachers are, I think, the staff is more attuned to student behaviors, and so when there are students that are presenting as possibly under, under the influence, we're very concerned about their safety from a liability perspective, and ensuring, you know, that, that they're going to be okay if they have to travel home or to a game or something like that. So we, we, we do tend to, you know, err on the side of caution, and send kids out for testing, and send kids out for, for that, just to ensure student safety. So again, we'll see what the numbers bear out this year, but those are, those are my feelings about those questions. So, just to follow up again, thank you, Mr. Altmeier. The presentation is now available on the website for anyone who's interested in exploring that further, and I will get into the rest of my superintendent's report. So, the first thing that I'm going to do is, is just preface this, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of things that I want to talk about, but before I speak about them, I want to just introduce the, a sort of a new feature to the board meetings, which is going to be a construction update. So, as you know, last year, we accepted a grant from the Department of Education for preschool facilities expansion grant. The state provided us with $3.6 million on about a $6 million project that we had submitted, and we awarded the bid at a special meeting on October 28th, just a couple of weeks ago, for Northeastern, which is the contractor that will be leading this work. So there's a lot of work that's going to be undertaken, there's a lot of information to share with the staff and with the public. So what I've decided to do, and I spoke with Mr. Pepe about it, and he's, he's excited to do this because he's really in the, in the weeds of this project, is each board meeting, Mr. Pepe's going to provide a really detailed construction update. I didn't have the opportunity to do this for this meeting, but in the future, these updates will be part of the committee meeting agendas. They'll also be shared with staff the week before the board meeting, so that staff members understand, you know, what's going to be spoken about. And then I'll make myself available to staff members as well, with Mr. Pepe and Mr. Haines, for any questions that they might have. Just so that everyone's aware of the progress that we're making, and there are no sort of surprises, and everyone understands what the implications are. So without further ado, I'll pass the, I'll pass this over to Mr. Pepe.
I'm so excited, I just can't hide it. So I've put together a little template for the reports. There's five parts to this. The first is a project background, and what I'm going to do is pretty much read the same paragraph, I might tweak it as we go on, but it's going to be the same information every time. This is a way for people who have not heard the message before to kind of enter the conversation and understand the background. So the project background is as such. The Denellin Board of Education has embarked on a journey to provide free, full-day preschool to all Denellin families. The first step in this journey was submitting an application for Preschool Education Aid, or PEA, funding from the New Jersey Department of Education. The district was approved for this funding in the fall of 2022, and began operating PEA-funded preschool in January of 2023. In June of 2024, the district applied for the preschool facilities expansion grant. This grant, in the amount of $3,463,300, is being used to offset the cost of the current preschool expansion project. The second part of my report is a recap of the last update, and since this is my first update, there is nothing to recap. The third part is going to be a timeline. I'm just going to share with you some things that have happened since the last time I reported out, or since we started the project. So on October 28th of 2025, the Denellin Board of Ed held a special meeting to award the pre-K classroom additions and interior alterations at Faber Elementary School Construction Project to Northeastern Interior Services LLC of Little Falls, New Jersey. Two days later, on October 30th, 2025, Greyhawk, the district construction management company, sent a Notice to Proceed letter to Northeastern, informing them that they had been awarded the contract, and instructing them to prepare a project timeline. A week later... ...together to meet in person to discuss a preliminary timeline. A week after that, on November 13th, 2025, the district met virtually with the architect and construction manager to discuss concerns about the tentative project schedule. And four days later, on November 17th, three meetings occurred. One was Northeastern came to visit the construction site, along with all of their subcontractors, to tour the site and address questions the subcontractors may have had about the project. After that concluded, Northeastern stayed and met with myself and, oh, I didn't write this in here, met with, I wrote with the district, but it was with myself and Mr. Haines, to discuss the tentative project schedule. We shared some of the concerns that we had met with previously. And then, third, later in the day, I met with Mr. Pello to discuss the impact of the project on the district before and after care program. All of these meetings, this is very preliminary, so right now, we are at the very beginning stages, we haven't even actually started the project. So we don't have answers to all the questions, but I wanted everyone to be aware of the conversations we're having, because we anticipate things that we're going to need to address as we move into the project. A few general updates, this is section four of the report. One is food service during construction. In case you're not aware of the project itself, there will be a portion of time where the cafeteria in Faber Elementary School is not accessible. So, during that time, students will be eating in classrooms, and so the district is currently working with Matio's, our food service management company, on developing a plan to deliver meals to the classrooms during construction. Eating in classrooms will begin when staff and students return from winter break, according to the current schedule, and will most likely last through the end of this school year. There are many different aspects that we're working through, talking with all the stakeholders, principal, you know, administration of the building, the food service company, the construction manager, the contractor, the architect, we're all having conversations to make sure that when we come back in January, we're ready to go, and we have a full meal service plan just relocated to classrooms. The second general update is construction management. So we are using the services of Greyhawk, and the district used this company to help us as we were coming to the conclusion of our prior construction projects. They were very, very helpful in helping us address concerns we had with some of the work of the contractors and some of the processes, and so we decided to bring them in from the beginning on this project. We are still working at the details as far as how many days they're going to be on site during the critical construction phases. And then the third general update is a project timeline. As I mentioned earlier, we had some concerns about the preliminary timeline that the contractors presented. I will say, we are very pleased with what they have presented so far, in that we really want this project to move through quickly, and they've done a very good job of putting together a timeline that is very aggressive and could get this project done in under a year. We did find some things that actually may have been a little too aggressive, and so we've been having conversations with the contractors to share our concerns, and we should, within the next two meetings, we should be able to nail down a full timeline, a project timeline. We do know that the first step of the project will be abatement of asbestos in the affected areas. We've already identified where this is. There's nothing that is currently present or dangerous, but as they start demolition to remove certain, you know, walls and ceilings and whatnot, they'll come across things that we have already identified, so they have to take care of that before they move into the actual construction phase. So that will be the first part of the process. And the last part of my report will be change orders. And if you're not familiar with construction projects, when you bid a project, you have a bunch of specifications, and a contractor, all the contractors put together their proposals, and those proposals have specific things they're going to do, specific materials they're going to use, and timelines. And what happens in any construction project is, at some point, they come across something that wasn't anticipated. It could be something in the ground when they're digging, it could be something in the ceiling when they take the ceiling tiles down. It could be just something that is a kind of a change in direction as we talk through what's the best way to make this work. So when those things come up, that requires a change order, which is a formal document that says, we are changing from the original specifications of this project, we're going to change this to this. Sometimes there are costs associated, usually there are costs associated with that. The district does have a, in the bid, we did include a $250,000 allowance, which means that the first $250,000 of change orders will not actually change the total price of the construction project. If there are change orders that exceed $250,000, then they'll be, need board approval so that we can find additional funding to pay for them. And right now, of course, since we haven't even started the project, we don't have any change orders to report. And that is my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pepe. Just one quick adjustment, the project background. PEA actually started in, we applied in '23, it started in '24. So January of '24 was when we started the preschool education aid funded, sort of pushed towards universal pre-K. So with, with all of that in mind, board members, I'll just provide you the opportunity, if you have any questions right now, for Mr. Pepe, we'll open up the floor to, to all of you.
Mr. Pepe, I would just ask, you mentioned the asbestos abatement. So there are areas that are, you said, already identified. How will that be managed with the faculty and the students when they're in school?
That's my question as well.
So, our goal is to have the work completed as much as possible while they're not in school, so over winter break. If the work is not completed by the time they come back, the way that this will be set up... set up is the actual very first step of the project is putting up barricades. We have a map, the contractor has a map of the areas that are affected. There will be barricades that are put up on either end, so there'll be no access for staff or students or community members to that part of the building while they're doing the asbestos abatement. Also, the asbestos, what's the word I'm looking for? The kind that's not as dangerous.
Fryable.
Yes, it is not friable. So the process that they're going to be using will be very isolated locally within that area between the barriers.
And yeah, and so to that point, there are two types of asbestos abatements that can occur. When there's friable asbestos, the entire site has to be shut down. This asbestos work is what's called wrap and cut. And so basically, everything is wrapped up first, and then it's basically pipes that are covered in asbestos. So as long as the area in which the work is being done is isolated, then there's no risk to any of the surrounding areas.
Thank you.
And by barriers, sir, you mean just like plastic put down because it's when it's in the air, right? So like, a wall barrier won't stop it, or a metal barrier wouldn't stop it. You'd have to, how we can keep our staff and students safe?
I can't answer that to the materials because I'm not knowledgeable about it. I can tell you that that's what we have our architect and our construction manager to make sure that the process they use is appropriate, and they've already reviewed what the proposal is, and they're comfortable that the barriers they're intending to put up are going to be what we need to protect them.
Is it okay to ask that when these areas are identified, that the board can be notified as well, as far as the plan?
Yeah, I mean, the area is the APR. And so the way that the barriers will be installed is essentially, I don't know what the names of the doors are. It's the, door A is the main office, if you go around to the right, where aftercare, the aftercare door, or from the north side of the parking lot, the barrier will be right there, basically blocking that hallway, so to the end of that hallway. And then on the other side, it is by the main office down that hallway that takes you to second grade and the nurse's office. So that entire section is going to be, there's going to be, you know, wrapped essentially. So it'll be completely isolated from any traffic from students or staff members or parents or anybody like that.
So I'm just a little confused. You said that construction's going to start in January?
That's, so right now, the tentative timeline is that the asbestos abatement will occur over winter break.
Okay.
And then from there, we'll have a sense of what happens timewise.
As far as the eating in class, I think I asked this last time, are we going to have to hire new people? Because we don't have the numbers to observe all the kids? Or maybe I'm confused. In the elementary level, do the teachers take their breaks at the same time as the kids? So if the teachers are on break and the kids are in the classrooms, who's watching the kids?
Yep, so we're working on plans for that. It will take either a substitute, teachers or new staff that we hire that have proper certification to be in the room with the students during their lunch. So yes, that's part of why we told the construction company that even though we appreciated their aggressive timeline, that we need them to hold off because we need to solve that problem.
Also, you said you had conversations about aftercare. Do you have any preliminary plans? Because the main space was the all-purpose room for aftercare, right? Classrooms and...
They use that as a place to come together.
Right.
And then they would break out into classrooms. So we have a couple of things that we have to address. One is like, where are they coming into the building?
Right.
And we have a couple of options that I shared with Mr. Pello, and we're going to make a decision shortly. There's also where are they going to be? And they can go directly to classrooms. We can have other areas such as the gym or the media center, but we have to work around things like basketball.
Basketball season, yeah.
Right, yeah. So these are the things that were, like, I had the first meeting with Mr. Pello to just kind of identify what these issues are.
Right.
And we're, we had some ideas, but I don't want to speak to the ideas until we know what's going to work.
And finally, I believe it's finally, sorry. These reports that you're going to give, will they be added to the website so we can revisit them?
They'll be included in the minutes, and they'll also be attached to the committee agendas.
Thank you so much.
One question, so ballpark timeline, so starting asbestos abatement in, over the winter break, roughly how long is the total time of the project? Ballpark? Is it a year, year and a half?
It's under a year.
Under a year.
If all goes according to plan, they're looking at August, September as a substantial completion with just a punch list left.
August of the same year?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a very aggressive timeline, so we'll see what happens as we go through the project, but as of right now, they have a plan that would get us to substantial completion somewhere, end of August, middle of September. There'd still be work left to do for the punch list. There'll be, you know, there's always items that just need to be fixed or tweaked or whatever, but we're looking at completely finished, everything done by December, by the end of December.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? Okay.
I did have this one random thought.
Yeah.
So is that going to potentially impact graduation if there's a backup, if Faber's a backup site?
Graduation...
If it's raining in Washington Park?
Oh, high school, middle school graduation?
Yeah.
Is in the gym?
Right. So would that be impacted? Probably not?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no effect on the gym.
Okay.
All right. So other items from my report, thank you, Mr. Pepe. Appreciate that. And, you know, just to sort of echo some of those questions, right, we've come up with most of the questions. We don't have all the answers right now, but we'll certainly share the answers, and we've got, all of our teams are professionals working on these items as well, so. So we have some grant visits that are coming up. Obviously, you know that grants has been, have been a big part of what we're doing. Tomorrow, Pete Mazagati, who's from the Office of Educator Effectiveness, will be visiting with regard to the Teacher Climate and Culture Grant. So he'll be meeting with our learning experience leaders at the three buildings for a session on how we're using those grant funds. Next week, we're very excited, as part of the climate change and resilience grant, we have Tammy Murphy coming to walk around with one of our elementary classes. So that's exciting, and that will certainly bring some good press and positive pictures and things like that to Faber and to the district. Grant-funded positions, we have in personnel items 14 through 19. These are all positions that are part of, parts of the grants that we are running. We have two climate change coordinator positions. One, K2, climate change educator, which is Megan Higgins, our K5 math instructional coach. Kristen Gunther, our gifted and talented teacher, will be the climate change coordinator. We have the coach grant, which is our K12 literacy coach. We're still looking for the coaching sort of process here, but we're looking at Carrie Johnson, who was just recently hired in the district to move into that position and provide K12 literacy support. We have the impact grant, which is related to the adoption of high-quality instructional materials and professional development in grades nine through 12. So there will be a literacy leadership team that Carrie Johnson will lead, and we also have high school teachers, Ms. Kaminsky, Mr. Kupiak, Mr. Lowenberg, Ms. Labisco, and Mr. Zukowski serving on that team. The lift grant is a $40,000 grant for family engagement for families of children who are zero to three years of age. And we have a project lead, and that person will be Beatrice Jimenez, who is our district CPIS, Community Parent Involvement Specialist, who just put on an incredible event that was taking place in the cafeteria just shortly, shortly ago. And then lastly, we have a school health NJ and Power Somerset grant for whole school, whole community, whole child. And Ava Di Olivera, who is one of our two school-based wellness specialists, will be overseeing that grant. So a lot of really cool things happening. Very proud of our staff members who are taking these leadership opportunities, and very excited to see what comes of them. Just a matter of sort of public interest, there's been some conversations about the removal of trees and other items around some of the buildings for safety purposes. We are, we've been sort of replenishing that, and we will be doing a shrub planting at the high school. Matt Olivi, our director of grounds, will be leading this work, along with support from Ms. Piano and the Environmental Club, who will be helping out as well. The PTO is doing a food drive. They're partnering with Fish Incorporated in Danellin to host a food drive throughout November and December. There are drop boxes in each of the school lobbies for canned goods, boxed goods, stable shelf, milk, baby food, breads and grains, proteins, canned proteins, snack foods for kids, and other items, as well as non-food donations, personal care and hygiene items, cleaning supplies, can openers, et cetera, et cetera. So families who are in need can directly, can collect food directly from Fish Incorporated, and details on the hours for that organization are at fishdonellinaria.org. And those families can just say that the Danellin PTO has sort of sent them, and they'll be able to access those items. Our work with the NJEA Labor Management Collaborative is moving forward. We met with the team today. It was, I was in the meeting along with Ms. Laguna-Morau, who is the DEA president, and Felicia Moody, who is the DAA president. So it's a very collaborative group, and we are looking at moving forward with a meeting in December to kind of work on school culture and climate-related items, and we'll continue to provide updates on that. We had field testing for NJSLA and NJGPA, which will occur in the spring of 2026. That's all done now. There were no significant issues with the testing, but I know that everybody's glad that there won't be testing for a while, including Mrs. Howard. Our NJGPA fall results came out in ELA. This is for 12th grade students who did not pass the assessment in 11th grade. We had 17 students take the ELA assessment. 10 of those 17 did pass, so that's great. We had 32 students who did not meet graduation readiness in math. Only seven of those students passed through the NJGPA fall assessment, and that means that those remaining students will have to complete a portfolio appeals process, which is facilitated by teachers at Danellin High School. We also received our ESSA accountability profiles. This is the federal accountability profiles that come out each year for school districts across the country, and they measure readiness by subgroup and overall district on a wide variety of metrics. One of the, I'm going to get into more details on this when I provide a state of the schools address later this spring, but one really notable piece here is that Faber Elementary had incredibly strong growth. The technical term here is that they had an MSGP of 70 for ELA and a 66 for math. And what that basically means is that the students who tested in fourth and fifth grade in ELA and in math showed more growth as compared to their peers from the third grade or fourth grade assessments than 70% of students who took tests, who took the test across the state. So, and this is school-wide, right? So it's not just that one class of students did well, or one grade level, or whatever. It's that all of the fourth and fifth grade students, when bundled together, their median growth was higher than 70% of all other schools' median growth for fourth and fifth grade. So it's a remarkable accomplishment. I'm very, very proud of Mr. Tenna and Ms. Moody for leading the work, and of course, our incredible teachers, who in ELA, they adopted a new core resource last year, wit and wisdom, really, you know, overcame a bunch of challenges with that, are doing a wonderful job this year. But just the performance in those classes, the willingness and the openness to new ideas and structuring their instructional blocks in a really focused way with small group instruction has just been amazing. Truly a model of excellent instruction. So we will, you know, we'll share more information about that. Overall, the district did show good improvement in ELA. Math performance is still lagging in grades six through 12, so certainly an area that we know that we need to focus on. The Danellin High School is starting its transition to become a school-wide Title One program. That process has already been completed last year, two years ago for Faber, and last year for the Lincoln Middle School. What that means basically is that all of the Title One funds that are allocated to Danellin High School are accessible for use for all of the students at the high school, rather than those funds only being available for targeted programming at the high school. So right now, we operate two school-wide programs, one at Faber, obviously, and one at the middle school. This would be the third of the three. And so for that to happen, there will be an application for transition, which will appear on the December agenda, and then we'll have school-wide stakeholder committee meetings. I think there's a requirement of three or four throughout the year. The first one, folks have been invited to, 15 people, including staff, parents, students, Dr. Gendrano, and the first meeting will be held December 2nd. Our work with the New Jersey Inclusion Project, which is the three-year support from the Department of Education on improving inclusive practices, has been going very well. The middle school and Faber are the two schools that have full school-wide support for three years. The site visits have been held in October. They were held also last week in November, and they're scheduled for January, March, and April. Staff members took a beliefs survey, which is a survey basically gauging how staff feels about the ability for all students to be successful, and those types of questions. And there have been coaching cycles that have occurred, and mission statements are being developed at each of those schools. The Faber mission statement has been completed. Middle School is working on theirs, but so far, really high engagement from staff, really good work being done in this area as well. The Nikhil Badlani Foundation, which we talked about, we've talked about in the past, the first youth advisory board meeting training summit took place at the Hodelik Firehouse on October 24th. Danellin High School students are one of, just, I think it's about three or four districts across the state who are represented on the youth advisory board. And this is an organization that is dedicated to traffic, safety, and education. So there were members of the state, there are members of State Department of Transportation there, you know, other representatives as well. Keep Middle Sex Moving has been very involved. And now, in addition to the 12th grade students, there are also six 11th grade students who are involved, and they are formalizing the Safety Spirit Week project that they came up while working with Keep Middle Sex Moving. They'll also be working with the municipal committee to, and the Danellin Borough Traffic and Safety Commission. So this is really, it's really good work. One of the key things that the Badlani Foundation is working on and students will be supporting is A1432, or Senate Bill 1469, which authorizes the use of school bus monitoring system to enforce the state law governing passing a school bus. What that means is that the law basically will require that school buses have some sort of camera attached to record people passing stopped school buses, which we know is sort of an endemic problem and an incredible, you know, hazard for students who are trying to cross the street or just others. And so this is a bill that's currently pending and, you know, may be signed during the lame duck session. The college fair at the high school was held, I think it was the biggest college fair that we've seen. There were 25 maybe, schools, universities, military groups, you know, other organizations that were represented there. Students were very engaged. One of the very cool aspects for me is that the ENL teachers and some of our bilingual staff members took our multilingual learners to the tables and helped facilitate conversations with each of the representatives there. The schools are also getting smarter. They're sending people who are bilingual, which has helped a lot in terms of the communication. But just to be able to kind of break the ice, which, you know, it's hard, even as adults, it's hard to go up to a table with a stranger and say, hi, can you share information? And so our staff really helped with that, which was wonderful. We have some policies and regulations on the agenda as well. I'll just talk about them now rather than then. In August, the Department of Education published guidance with regard to the Freedom to Read Act, which was passed recently. This requires districts to adopt policies and procedures that provide standards for the curation of library material, establish criteria for the removal of existing school library material, and provide protection against attempted... library material, and provide protection against attempts to censor school library material. So, there are three policies and three regulations that are on tonight's agenda for first reading that relate to that, and certainly, we can talk about that when we get there. Finally, the enrollment report. Currently, we are at 1,332 students, not including our private pre-K students, and with those, we have 1,415 total students being served by the district. Faber is at 610, Middle School is at 314, and the high school is at 408. And so, we are, we're at a, a pretty stable point, a little bit above 1,400 as of right now. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any questions, guys, before we move on? Okay?
Real quick question. Capacity with the growth rate that you're seeing right now over the past couple of years, what does it look like for projected capacity?
So, right now, we are below where we anticipated we would be at the end of last year, and so, you know, we're, I, I, I do think that we've leveled off quite a bit. We're pretty in line with the demographic survey results, and, you know, that's a good thing. But, you know, part of this process of preschool expansion is that we want to provide more capacity where we can, and so, you know, the facilities project adds eight classrooms, eight full-size classrooms, ostensibly for the use of, of preschool classrooms. We also, right now, have two private providers, and those private providers are getting very positive remarks, you know, feedback from parents that are using those services. So, we have this opportunity to potentially move everybody in-house and use those eight classrooms. This would not be until the 28, 29 school year. Or we can use those classrooms for, some for preschool, some for other things, you know, sort of as we see fit, as allowable by the, by the terms of the grant. So, right now, you know, Faber has, has grown tremendously, and, you know, there are, there are so many new staff members there, and there are so many new programs there. At the same time, we've also, we lost our autism program. We've lost additional self-contained classrooms, and it would be great to be able to bring those back. We have students that we send to out-of-district placements because we don't have the capacity to serve their educational needs, and every district has students that they, that they serve to, you know, send to out-of-district placements. But in my mind, and I think in the mind of Dr. Santinello, we have the opportunity to potentially bring some of those students back through the expansion of some of those, those programs. And so, you know, we will have more spaces, which are large, new, beautiful spaces with, you know, with bathrooms built into them. And so, you know, this is part of the conversation about growth and sustainability. You know, we, we want to not serve kind of the de minimis population of the school district, but we want to serve as many kids in the district as we can in-house, because we know that there are huge benefits for socialization. Obviously, the, you know, the benefits to parents to be able to drop your kid off at Faber, rather than put them on a bus and they drive an hour north or somewhere like that. You know, so these are, these are some of the things that we're thinking about. But, you know, with regards to enrollment specifically, we are, we are pretty level right now. We did have, we did anticipate getting more preschool students. We know that our university, our universe is a little bit bigger, but we had a number of families who were offered universal free, you know, full-day pre-K, and they declined. And so, I think, you know, it's, some of this is surprising to us, new learnings about people's preferences and those kinds of things, you know, so, so we shall see.
All right. Thank you. Yeah? Any other questions? Okay. So, let's move along to item number eight, public comment on agenda action items only. So, the board invites public comment from members of our community in accordance with Board Policy 0167, on agenda, on agenda action items to be voted on only. Public comment sections are intended to provide an opportunity for members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The board and administration will take notes sharing, take notes during public comment, but will not provide substantive responses to questions or concerns raised by individual speakers. If necessary, the superintendent may provide a brief response after the entire public comment period is completed. The board appreciates and welcomes feedback from the community, but it is not at liberty to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue with members of the public during this portion of the meeting. Prior to making your public comment, please state your name and municipality. Please note that all statements must be directed to the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone at this time if you'd like to make comments on agenda action items to be voted on only. And prior to beginning your comment, please state the action item to be voted on that you would like to comment on. Last call. Okay. Moving along to item number nine, committee reports. So, just to note here, we, this is the first board meeting where we're kind of changing up the agenda a little bit to try to streamline some of the things that we're doing here. So, in the following items that you'll see on the agenda, we'll be grouping all the committee reports together before they are read prior to each section, but we will group them all together, hear about the reports, and then proceed, after the approval of minutes from previous meetings, proceed to the actions that we would be taking on those items in each of those committees. So, so let's give this a go. So, moving on to item number nine, committee reports. I'm going to turn the microphone or the floor over to Ms. Howard, who is our Education Committee Chair.
Thank you. The Education Committee met on November 11th. Present were myself, Ms. Iback, Ms. Schimpf, Dr. Gendrano, Ms. Drapkin, and Mr. Ross. The Education Committee discussed a number of items, including an update on the district's goal-setting work for the 25-26 school year, a wide range of professional development occurring throughout the district, information related to the grant-funded work currently in operation across the three schools, details about the school-wide Title I work being completed at Faber and LMS, and the transition to school-wide meetings that will be occurring this year at DHS, updates on the NJSLA and NJGPA field testing that concluded last week, policies and regulations related to the Freedom to Read Act, which are on tonight's agenda for first reading, details about the preschool budget and operational plan, which are in the operations section for approval, Regulation 2464 Gifted and Talented, and Regulation 2440 Honoring Student Achievement, the 24-25 ESSA Accountability Profiles for the District in Each School, which is based on state testing attendance, graduation rates, and other information, and a variety of other items and confidential matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Howard. Moving on to 9B Personnel. I'll, I'll read the report there. So, the Personnel Committee met on November 11th. In attendance were myself, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Shep, Mr. Ross. During that meeting, a number of items were discussed, including staffing information for the current year, two sidebars with the DEA that are included on tonight's agenda for approval, Regulation 3150 and the included staff discipline chart, grant-funded staff roles that have been created throughout the district, and a number of confidential terms. Moving on to 9C, Operations Committee Report. Mr. Walker, our chair, is not here this evening, so I'll go ahead and walk through those. The Operations Committee met on November 11th. In attendance were Mr. Walker, Ms. Condit, Mr. Saanoy, myself, Mr. Pepe, and Mr. Ross. During that meeting, we discussed a number of items, including items on, a number of items on tonight's agenda for approval, beautification efforts at DHS, including the planting of about 40 new shrubs in the front of the building, updates related to the district's preschool facilities expansion grant, updates on the many internal construction projects occurring throughout the district, information about a possible submission of the NJ DOE Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act Water Infrastructure Grant, security improvements and actions that are ongoing, and a variety of confidential matters. That concludes the operations report. Moving on to 9D, policy. I think we'll be talking about that later. Oh, no policy committee report. And then for 9E, negotiations, just to say that they are, they are going well with the... Oh, our negotiations with DAA are, are going well, and we'll have more information to share at the next meeting. Okay. Moving along to item number 10, approval of minutes. At this time, looking for the approval of 10A and B. Looking for motion for that, and these are the minutes from our October, October 14th meeting, as well as our special ad hoc October 28th meeting. So, looking for motion?
Motion to approve 10A, A and B as...
Yes. Okay. Open for questions or comments? Last call? Okay. Mr. Pepe, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Iback?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrano?
Yes.
Mrs. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Saanoy?
Yes.
Ms. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Wonderful. Moving along to item 11A. These are board action, to the board action items. Moving on to 11, 11A Education, looking for a motion to approve 11A 1 through 6 as a block?
Motion to approve 11A 1 through...
Oh, is it all of 11? Hold on. We're not gonna go, oh. Oh. Okay. So, all right, so, okay. So, motion here, there here is then, looking for a motion for, to approve 11, item 11, which includes board action items for education, personnel, as well as operations. Move to approved action items for the board?
So, can I, I'm just gonna clarify. So, item 11, this is, again, for those of you who are following at home, this is a new agenda format. So, this is item 11, A 1 through 6, B 1 through 22, that includes the addendum.
Right.
And C 1 through...
Oh, right.
12.
Not D, right.
Yeah. Oh, and D, 1 through 3. Right. So, that's, so it's item 11, A through D, including item B 22, which is on the addendum.
Right. So, looking for a motion?
Yeah. Move to approve board action items, as indicated.
Second?
Okay. Open for questions or comments?
I would like to comment on A 6. I am grateful for this action to be taken to, you know, enrich the, the opportunities for the youth and, and staff to receive the opportunity for the therapy dog to visit at Faber School. I think that's a wonderful move for the social, emotional environment.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll just note a couple items, just the, the grant-funded items that I spoke about are in 14 through 19. We also have the addition in personnel, which is B 20 for the, the sidebar to add the winter, winter cheer, which Queen spoke about, and so, folks have, have, that's been advertised, there's been conversation about that. We're very excited about that moving forward. And then, item 22 in personnel is a sidebar agreement for additional compensation for three members of the child study team who have done an incredible job covering after the unfortunate departure of our leave replacement case manager, sort of unexpected in, earlier in October. So, very thankful for the work that those three individuals have, have done, and, you know, we're happy to have the sidebar be able to approved in, in item 22. In addition to that, we have operations 4 and 5, which is C 4 and C 5, which relate to the 26-27 preschool expansion, preschool project, preschool program, rather. So, that is the program plan, and then the enrollment. So, you can look at the attachment if you're interested in the enrollment there, and sort of see how that, that's working through. And then, we also are approving in item 11, the services of a district residency officer. We had a residency officer for some time. We've been using our security folks from time to time for that process, but in order to sort of keep them separate, we were able to identify a residency officer who can provide some services as needed for the remainder of the school year. So, definitely looking forward to that.
I do have a comment about the 11 that you just spoke to. Is the $60 an hour up to a certain amount, or is it just $60 an hour forever?
So, it's $60 an hour, however, those hours are only when we call him to do work for us. So, there's not a limit built into the item.
So, he won't work unless we call him into work?
Correct.
I did have a question. I had, I had to say something about the therapy dogs. I think it's really cool. I noticed that was primarily at Faber. Is there thought to expand that to middle school and high school?
Yeah. I think right now, our, our district behaviorist, Nancy Koster, is primarily at Faber, and so, the goal is to kind of trial this at each grade level at Faber, and if it works out well, I know Ms. Koster is very interested in this. Also, Ms. Drapkin has expressed a lot of interest in therapy dog programming, and so, I think we're, we're giving it a go at Faber to see how things are, and then we'll expand as, you know, as we can, if needed. Okay. Or as desired.
So, what could be considered success criteria if you're just leveraging that to see as a trial how it works at Faber?
It's a good question. I mean, I think a lot of it's just gonna be anecdotal feedback about student experience, and, you know, the, the, the goal of a therapy dog sort of program is to, is, is really about improving wellness overall, and so, if there's a positive response from students and there's an excitement about this, I mean, this is a free program right now, and so, anything that we can do to kind of improve the student experience, and especially students who might feel perhaps like they're, they're, they don't feel a part of the school community, or they need maybe a little bit more connection, this might provide some of that benefit.
Is there a way to also target it for self-help and to help students encourage leveraging the services that are already in the school?
Yeah. I mean, I think that there, so, the way that, the, the, the way the program is being pushed out is really through sort of the behaviorist, but we also have school wellness, you know, specialist services at each of the buildings, plus our counseling services. So, anything that we can tie into that, I know will be tied into it. So, I think that's, that's sort of to your point, I think that does make some sense. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Last call? Okay. Mr. Pepe, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Iback?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrano?
Yes.
Mrs. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Saanoy?
Yes.
Miss, excuse me, Ms. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Shep?
Yes, but abstaining from A 3, line 4.
Thank you very much, and that concludes the voting. The motion passes.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, that catapults us far ahead to item number 12.
That's the goal.
Okay. That's different. All right. Any old business anyone would like to come back to? Any old business anyone'd like to come back to? Okay. Moving on to item thirteen, any new business?
All right, so I have two items on there, just for the board's consideration. Obviously, those are not items for, to be voted on. We put together, Mr. Pepe and I, the Board Meeting Schedule Draft for 2026. This is an item that will appear on the reorganization agenda for approval, but I just wanted to put the dates out there and the cadence so that everyone had time to review. This draft basically has two meetings in January, and then, really, one meeting throughout each of the rest of the months. We placed the May fifth, the March seventeenth and the May fifth meetings based on the statutory requirements for the budget approvals and the tentative budget presentation. May fifth is also, it precedes the May fifteenth statutory date for non-tenured staff renewals, so it serves both of those purposes. In the past, we have had two, two April meetings. If we can streamline them, and that makes sense, then that would, that's certainly, you know, feasible based on this structure. The, the second thing we've also done at times, based on the end of the school year, is we've had a late May board meeting, where we've done some of the recognitions, like retirees or teachers of the educators of the year, and then, we've done the rest in June. This draft schedule has all the recognitions in June, which obviously would make it, you know, a longer meeting, but that would be recognition of all of our retirees from the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, plus all of our educators of the year. So, obviously, this is, you know, one more month of conversation, and then, one more month of discussion and approval in, in the beginning of January. So, if you have any feedback, or if there's any feedback that's gathered, you know, from the schools, certainly, we can make adjustments as needed.
Okay. Any questions, guys?
I have something for new business. I think this is new business. As far as our format, this change in format, I did notice a couple of things when we started. The public wasn't here for our Pledge of Allegiance, or as well as our Moment of Silence. Small-town vibes is better to have it as a community thing. I also want to point out that while we did save a few minutes with this new format, the amount of things that we pass all at once, in the future, something may be overlooked by bunching it all together. And in the old format, we were able to look at certain chunks a little bit closer. So, I just cautioned us, sticking to this, that things may be overlooked in the future.
Thank you for the point, Mr. Anderson. Any other comments for new business? Okay. All right, then I'll move on to item number fourteen.
I'm sorry, so, so, there is a second item for new business, but I think, I mean, it would be, we're, we're all, you know, just experiencing this new format for the first time. So, you know, Mr. Anderson has mentioned two things. The first, obviously, is the location of the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence, which could certainly very easily be moved. It would probably be worthwhile, I would recommend, that the board have some dialogue about this, or at least think about it, and we can discuss it again in December. So, I don't know if anyone has any initial reactions or responses to that particular item. Obviously, the second piece of it is the chunking of the approvals. I will point out, the chunks are the same, they just happen to all be under eleven. And so, the, the agenda is sent out Friday before the board meeting with an update on those items. But again, this is the board's meeting, so it's important that board members, you feel empowered to have those conversations. You're certainly free to agree, or disagree, or have no opinion about it, but I just wanted to make sure that there was a pause there to honor sort of Mr. Anderson's commentary.
So, guys, what do you think? What do you think of the new format?
I'll say, I feel like we need to give it a few goes to kind of figure out what the cadence is really gonna feel like. I can certainly appreciate Mr. Anderson's concern about everything being bulked together, but as Mr. Ross pointed out, I do think that that's kind of a burden that's on us, in terms of, we do receive the agenda in advance, so we do have time to look over things, highlight things that we may have questions on, and then, go ahead and be prepared to bring them up during that portion, portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Shep. Any other thoughts, guys? I would say, I agree with, with Ms. Shep, that I think we maybe need to give this a couple more goes, to get comfortable with it.
Okay. And with regard to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah, I do second Mr. Anderson's comment. Having the Pledge of Allegiance with the public would be a lot better.
Any other thoughts? I mean, again, this is not, you know, we're not setting anything in stone, so if we move it for the next meeting, and we try it there, and we can see how that goes. You know, I, I mean, I, I am not a, an elected board member, but I will say, having everybody together saying the Pledge of Allegiance is, you know, is a pretty special thing. So, you know, we can certainly discuss moving that piece of it. Okay, thank you. The, the other piece of new business is, I just wanted to bring up the district calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven. There's no draft of the calendar yet. I did share some information with Ms. Laguna Marao, who received some feedback from the DEA. Labor Day is as late as it can be. I believe it's September sixth this year coming up, and so, in 2026. That means that there will be some schools that start very, very late, September seventh. There will be other schools that start like four weeks before Labor Day. Some of the schools in Morris County that, that, you know, traditionally start kind of like mid-August. We've tended to start with new staff orientation, basically, the last Monday in August, which would be August thirty-first, or something like that. I don't have it in front of me, is that right? Yeah, I'm seeing some nodding. And so, then, you know, there would still be a Labor Day weekend. There could also be a start on August twenty-fourth, which is the Monday before that, which is more around the date that we would start, because usually, Labor Day is around September first, second, whatever it might be. In any case, this is gonna be a conversation we're gonna need to have. The, you know, winter break time period is another piece of things, because, you know, each day, each calendar year, you know, Christmas moves and New Year's Day moves. And so, when those are on a Wednesday, what happens if they're on a Thursday? What if there's on, there's on, you know, something on a Monday? So, just take a look at next year. You know, as, as you have some time, I'll probably have some, some templates, some models for, for discussion at our December meeting. And then, typically, we've approved the calendar in the second January meeting the last bunch of years. So, I just want everyone to just, to be aware of that, and obviously, you know, sort of this, the typical conversations that we have about the calendar. And September starts, and August starts, and, you know, how much school should we have? It, it is entirely possible, and would be somewhat normal, given the amount of summer break, that we have a full week of school before Labor Day. That might be something that kind of blows people's minds, but that would also be, you know, very normal, given, you know, where, where August lies, and how early we're getting at this year, and those sorts of things. So, that's one option. There are a lot of options, so I just wanted to put that out there as an initial point of discussion, just so that everyone can start wrapping their heads around that.
So, just to add to that, I, I wanted, like, part of it is when, not just when we'd start, but also what that would mean as to when we would end. And part of that answer, I believe, is also part of what days would we have off in between, potentially?
Yes.
There have been times, some years, when we've had like long droughts in the spring, where kids have just been going five days a week?
Yeah.
And perhaps need a break, or something like that. So, some considerations, right?
Yeah, and, and Good Friday is in March. So, I mean, it's like late, it's sort of late March, or something like that, which means, you know, if we have spring break at the same time that Good Friday is, which is often the case, just for, to minimize the number of days, not for the religious holiday aspect of things, then, you know, we have all of April and May with no breaks, which is a long stretch, right? And that's, that's all the testing, and that's AP testing, et cetera. We also have the ability to, you know, play with days, you know, around Columbus Day, or we could have a November break, you know, in the first full week of November. I mean, there, there are a thousand different ways that this can be sort of worked through. So, I would just say, again, take a look at things in the committees. I'll share some drafts, so that everyone maybe has some, some, the ability to be prepared for some dialogue. And then, you know, there's no pressure to approve anything immediately, but, yeah. But, you know, next year's calendar looks a little bit, a little bit interesting, so.
Yes. I was gonna say, if we go two full months without a break, I think we may need, we may need those therapy dogs. Maybe more, more. Any other thoughts? Any other new business? Okay. So, we got our homework for us for next time. So, President's remarks, I typically don't say much here, I just wanted to just note that, looking at the look-ahead section, there are a number of events that are happening in the, in the next few weeks. I'm going to do my best to go to as many of them as I can, to participate. If you can join, that would be awesome, but just to note that we are welcome to go, stop in and support our, our kids and our groups there, so. And with that, I'll move on to item number fifteen. Public comments on any issue, any topic. The board invites public comments from members of our community in accordance with Board Policy 0167 on any issue or topic. Public comment sections are intended to provide an opportunity for members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The board administration will take notes during public comment, but will not provide substantive responses to questions or concerns raised by individual speakers. If necessary, superintendent may provide a brief response after the entire public comment period is completed. The board appreciates and welcomes feedback from the community, but is not at liberty to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue with members of the public during this portion of the meeting. Prior to making a public comment, please state your name and municipality. Please note that all statements must be directed to the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone at this time if you'd like to make comments on any issue or any topic. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Tricia Campbell. I'm a-
Could you move the microphone, or could we, yeah, so that everybody can hear you all two online as well?
All right. Is that going? My name's Tricia Campbell, and I'm from Dunellen. I've had five children in this school district since 1999, and over the years, I've seen dedication of the staff. However, I need to talk to you about the students that are being left behind. We urgently, we urgently need an LLD classroom in both our middle school and high school. One of my children struggled for years to get the right support and structure in this school district, and despite every effort from the caring teachers, it's become clear that the environment didn't accommodate what he needed. And with that, we eventually made the difficult decision to terminate his enrollment in the Dunellen Public School District. We now pay out of pocket for private schooling to make sure our child gets the specialized instruction that he needs. It's a huge financial sacrifice for our family, but more than that, it's heartbreaking, because we love this district. This is not an option for our youngest child, who's soon approaching middle school and will face similar issues. My youngest son needs an LLD classroom in the middle school, a place where he can be with children like himself in the small learning groups, with teachers that are trained and to instruct, instruct the students who produce, who process language differently, a place that moves at the right place, that provides structure and builds confidence instead of eroding it. Without that structure, kids can get exhausted. They're not gonna do well in school, they're unmotivated, they're labeled distracted. Many of our children struggle with invisible disabilities, and are often overlooked to social capabilities. I recently had an encounter with a staff member that told me, because my child is social and would get along with other peers in general education, he would do, do just fine. Although he would be fine socially, that's not the case academically. It's often assumed that just because someone is well-spoken, that capable, they're capable of learning at the same pace as others, and vice versa. How these children with invisible disabilities carry themselves should not be used as a measuring stick when determining what accommodations they need in an academic setting. I know Dunellen is a small district, but that doesn't mean that we can't do big things. While this may be a financial issue, out-of, out-of-district placements can cost tens of thousands of dollars per year, per student, but beyond the numbers, this is a moral issue. These are our kids, and they deserve to learn in the same community where they live, along with their peers in classrooms built for their success. Inclusively goes beyond what you look like and what language you speak, and I feel as though, with learning disabilities, you're being heavily omitted. By implementing an LLD classroom for the middle and high school, you're shaping a future for every student regardless of ability, stifling the silent cost of bias and assist them to help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any other comments on any item, any topic? Last call? Okay. Okay, move along to, at this point now, moving on to item number sixteen, executive session. So, the Dunellen Board of Education will now adjourn into executive session to discuss items that fall within specific exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, CNJ SA 10 4-12B. The confidential matters discussed by the board during the executive session include items related to individual privacy, collective bargaining agreements, pending or anticipated litigation, as well as personnel. Any discussion that does not need to maintain confidentiality will be made public as soon as it is practical. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All individuals who may be discussed in executive session have been adequately notified. Action will not take place after the conclusion of the executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Move to go to exec.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, we will leave it here, and we will adjourn from our executive session when that's completed. We will see you next time, December eighteenth, seven PM, right here. Thanks, everyone, and a happy Thanksgiving.